I got, totally got it.
This one fifty is on my screen, so I'm getting fifty. It's four of five.
I was just saying, we went by it the other day because we were going to Belton. It's not part of there, is it?
He said he put many people that are in surgery, he's in surgery with them. And then on the site, so he's going to take our garage and build it at another one, just like. Oh. The single guy that's forty two now, drove by a water road, went to Rayland. And his parents still own the building, Murphy's, he was auntie. So, yeah, he's already, um, concreteed the underappel. Oh, my gosh, you're so, it's like boom, boom.
Demographic.
Been with the district longer than anyone, I bet.
Eighteen years, is it? Is it two thousand two?
I knew he was here when it opened up west.
He's very impressive.
Yeah. I could just, when he would come in, I would just like sit there and just listen, I'm like, oh my gosh. I just loved it, so interesting.
Hey, Rick?
Yeah.
Hey, we're going live with you, so we're gonna get started here in a couple minutes. So you're, you're on a hot mic. As a matter of fact, you want me to run a gate, you want?
No, 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 thank you.
Uh, yeah. Well, it says, unless you want to check all, all of our kids there.
Well, I was gonna say, that would make more sense for him to go first.
We can amend, we can amend it to two point oh three.
I mean.
I think you've got somebody else working.
Say, what are we gonna do, just so we know, uh, do the demographics first from the work session. Since they're gonna have them.
You need to communicate with Rick, should I, in that regard, or do you think he'll be okay?
I think he'll be okay.
Thank you.
I know, I was, I'm like, I can't mumble to myself.
Jeremy, we good? Okay, we're gonna call this work session to order. Um, if I could have somebody please get, uh, make a motion for an adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion and a second for our agenda for our work session tonight. Is there any discussion on this particular agenda? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Um, with our agenda items, since we do have some presenters here, um, this evening that are joining us, uh, virtually, we are actually going to go straight to two point zero three, which is our demographics presentation, so that they don't have to wait for us to talk about, um, the board policies. So, Rick, we, we will expect some candy or something, so. So we are gonna move to two point zero three, which is our demographics presentation. I'll actually turn it over to Dr. Buck first.
As you guys know, Rick's been here for, uh, many, many years, is it two thousand two, Rick?
Yeah, this is the, this would be the eighteenth year, yes.
And he presented to multiple groups, including, uh, Dr. Miller and I yesterday, so I think he'll enjoy what he has to say. And, and obviously, uh, one of the things you might want to pay attention to is that, um, the kindergarten decline, uh, he can give you some perspective of all the district he works in across the country, and, and what our decline in kindergarten has compared to everybody else due to COVID.
Okay. So, are we ready?
Yes. You have the floor.
Um, the, um, Kevin, you have to enable screen sharing for me. While we're waiting for that to come around, though, yes, I would, um, President Murdoch, members of the board, Dr. Buck, um, it is our pleasure here, uh, to be presenting the results of our demographic study, again, uh, to the board, sometimes we present it in person, sometimes we haven't. Um, I certainly had planned to do that this year, I was hoping to do that this year. Um, and of course, um, the pandemic took other, you know, took other courses. So, um, for those of you who don't know, I, I, I'm a professional demographer. I've been doing this type of work for over thirty years, and in that time, worked for over fifty different school districts, uh, many of them in Arizona, but three or four in the Kansas City area, and continue to have an ongoing relationship with, um, your, your, your district, and also the Liberty School District up north. And during that, all of that period of time, really all the service time, we have been working with, uh, Land Marketing and Dan Whitney. And in, in most years, um, he has a data product that we've been purchasing for probably fifteen years, but with COVID and with my ability to do limited fieldwork and with his incredible expertise, this time we, we have a bigger role on the, on the project for Dan. And Dan, I'd like just to give you a minute to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Rick. Um, I have a company called Land Marketing, and since, uh, January of two thousand, I've been, uh, monitoring all new housing activity in Kansas City. And, and, uh, I, I've seen it evolve over the years, and different kinds of products come and go, and, and different demographics fill those households. So it's been an interesting relationship to, to understand what Rick does with, uh, my field data, and, uh, um, you know, how that continues to evolve. And, and as part of our process, we, we deal with all the plan commissions, the, all the recorded plaits, and, uh, it's a tremendous amount of, uh, of nerdery, uh, if you will. And I don't get a fly as much as Rick does, but I did calculate the other day that over the years, I put on about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand miles, uh, in field, windshield time, uh, looking through neighborhoods. And a fair amount of that in Lee Summit. So I'm happy to be a part of the team.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Dan. Um, scope of work for the district, I'm just gonna review real quickly for some of you who maybe haven't seen this before. Um, obviously thorough analysis of our enrollment trends over time, particularly the grade level characteristics, uh, the geographic distribution of students, uh, the small area analysis that we do, looking at where kids are, and where that change is occurring almost at the neighborhood level. Um, and then more and more, looking at the, um, choice, particularly this year with COVID, uh, we saw what choice, uh, can, can do to enrollment numbers. We saw it again last year, we'll talk about why. The demographic characteristics of the actual population, um, become more and more important, especially as the growth rate continues to slow, uh, the population ages, and that has a big impact on enrollment. You see it mostly in the type, in the age structure of the housing units. Um, and obviously housing supply characteristics are important to us. Residential development going forward, it's always been part of the picture, and it continues to be, although it's a little bit different picture these days. And Dan's gonna help bring some clarification to that for us a little bit later. And then we do two models, uh, that cross-check each other. We do a macroeconomic top-down, how does Lee Summit fit into Jackson County, fit into the state of Missouri? You know, sort of the regional control totals, if you will, for, for growth and housing and things like that. And then a sub-district, um, model that works from the bottom up. We have the district divided into a great number, a hundred and seventy or so, analysis areas, we call them grids, uh, that lets us look at those characteristics in the neighborhoods. It tells us a lot about where we're going, not just in total, but you can see where we're rising and where we're falling. And then in, over the past years, we've had the opportunity at various times to participate, uh, with facility planning and attendance area work. And so real quickly, these are this system of, uh, planning grids. They're generally a quarter square mile or smaller, uh, where the, you know, within the developed parts of the district, obviously, larger in other areas. These are nice because, uh, we generally don't change them over time, so that unlike attendance areas or programs that move around, um, these are solid, and it gives us an apples-to-apples comparison over time with that distribution of enrollment. And starting back over with, you know, kind of the facts of where we are, the blue bars here are just total, uh, fortieth day headcount enrollment, this is K-12 only. Um, the green squiggly line is the year-over-year percent change. And as we're talking, in the period, you know, the first part of the two thousands especially, the district experienced some pretty high levels of growth. And actually, for the decade, uh, experienced two point one percent annual growth, in spite of the fact that, of course, the recession really slowed things down, you know, at the end of that period. But nearly since then, um, total enrollment hasn't really increased, you know, to speak of at all. And in fact, the last two years has, has declined. And this is as, since twenty-ten, there's been about forty-four hundred housing units added to the district. So it's not like there isn't some construction going on. It's just that the rate of that and the rate of people moving in with kids, uh, isn't at this point sufficient to offset the aging of the population. And then we can see, the next way we kind of slice the data, if you will, this is again, district totals, but looking at it in grade groupings, K-two, three, five, six, eight, the average enrollment in each one of those. And, um, this district has always had somewhat of a older profile, even, even in this growth period. I think it's a function of the fact that it's been a move-up housing market for quite some time. But as you can see, enrollment basically in that youngest grade cohort peaked back in, you know, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, about, about eight years ago. And we've seen that, you know, since then, some of the other cohorts have continued to go up somewhat, again, move-up housing market. And one of the things we'll talk about is the lack of entry-level housing in the district. So what new housing there is generally is targeted toward mid-level and, and move up and, and better kind of markets. And then, of course, we have the whole impacts from the last two years. Um, the, the enrollment loss last year was the first one in eight or ten years, since, basically since the recession period. And, uh, it was driven, uh, from the expansion of two private, uh, parochial schools, both an elementary and a high school in the district, that basically took on more students at the same time that we had, uh, the impacts of our latest boundary changes going into effect. And there is some, you know, evidence that suggests that, that the declines that year were greater than what was picked up just at the parochial schools, so there may be some other people chewing, choosing other options as well. This year, your district, like almost everyone that I serve, the twenty-five that I'm serving this year, uh, that have this pattern with the K-two drop, and it's mostly kindergarten, first grade. Um, altogether, we are estimating-gestimating that we're down two hundred to two hundred and fifty, uh, students, the vast majority of those in that K-two group. Um, we do anticipate that this will cause a bit of a bump last year. So whether, some parents are actually choosing to sit the year out, particularly with kindergarteners, compulsory age of attendance doesn't kick in, and so there's some kids that didn't enter the pipeline. And then there's more that are homeschooling. We are, we know our homeschooling numbers are up by a hundred or so. And then we also know there's what's called pods. And these are groups of parents who essentially work together to hire tutors or to work to educate their kids. So the thing about that bump, though, unlike the one from last year, is that we're gonna get a percentage of those kids back next year, which makes, uh, forecasting the enrollment for next year even more fun than it usually is. So, um, driving back down to the, sort of the nitty-gritty, we do work with student-level information, just basic, um, grade level, what school they attend, address, so we can make maps like this, and allows us to, to tie enrollment levels directly to housing levels and housing characteristics. And it also forms in, of course, the totals that we use by planning grid in, in our model. And those model, and those totals are shown here for this year. And this is a density map, and because the grids are different size, it's necessary to normalize it for the coloring. So the coloring in this map really does reflect enrollment per square mile, uh, whereas the numbers are the actual number of K-12 students that we're serving from those grids, each of those grids, this year. So that's not student population that's out there, school-age population. These are actual all, um, LSR seven students. And the interesting thing is you've got these, you know, fairly distinct clusters. You've got the older, sort of established, uh, portions of Lee Summit, got the growth that's occurred over the last twenty or twenty-five years in the West Corridor, Longview Road and Third Street. And then you've got the more, the most recently emerging area, which of course is in the very southwest corner of the district, um, which was, you know, basically forced into that corner over the PRI lands we're gonna be talking about today because they weren't available for development. Um, we can do fun things with this develop, with this data, like look at changes over time. So if we look at the fifteen to eighteen period, we didn't have great growth of, you know, obviously we've seen that in the district, but it, the trend was generally still upward. And nonetheless, we had areas in blue, which indicate decline, which were neighborhoods that were aging, some of them in the central portion of the, of the, of the, um, the city and the district, but more of, um, a little bit to the north along Colburn Road and some, um, areas that developed somewhat later. And then already in that western corridor we're talking about, where the winter sets, and those areas where, um, population in decline due to aging. So, and anywhere where you see red on this map, most of the other places where you see larger increases are linked directly to active development projects. The last two years have looked dramatically different. I didn't want to break them into two pieces, even though I was tempted, but, um, this is the last two years. So you can see, unlike the year before, when there was a fair amount of pink, um, here or there in the map, um, we've basically gone all blue in the central and the western portions of the district, extraordinarily so. And what I mean by that is, um, it's more than anything that aging would have taken into account. It's more than, um, the increases in private school or parochial school enrollment would have indicated. So we, we know it's pandemic-related. Um, and again, you still see the pop-outs where we have growth in areas like Chapman Farms and Woodman Trails. And we'll talk about developments later, but, uh, the last two years has looked dramatically different than anything that I've seen since serving the district in, in the two thousands, starting to serve the district in two thousand and two. That said, this decade has definitely been a departure from the two thousands. Um, two point three percent annual growth in population during the two thousands, um, driven by some fairly, um, strong housing unit additions, um, dropping now to just one percent per year during this decade. Um, and even though the population rate of growth has started to slow, we haven't seen a huge decline yet in the percentage of the population that's under eighteen. However, if you look at those percentages and how they break out, you'll see it shifting away from the younger ones to the older ones. And the next thing is it'll, those, those younger ones will keep matriculating through the system, and we'll expect those rates to continue to decline, unless we get into the position where, um, there's more entry-level, um, housing added to the district. And even when there is, you have to realize that we now have a population of a hundred thousand people and forty thousand housing units. So just, so, just because somebody goes out and builds even a thousand housing units, it may not be enough to turn the tide in terms of what the enrollment numbers look like. And it certainly hasn't been the last ten years, of all those four thousand units that have been added. The more telling thing we look at is this age distribution of the householders. And we look at the twenty-five to thirty-four, thirty-five to forty-four groups, as the ones being primarily responsible, uh, for generating most of the young students, most of the, most of the babies. Um, interestingly, the twenty-five to thirty-four group used to be the most important. And now, um, especially in areas like yours, we're seeing thirty-five to forty-four, uh, group being, um, almost equally important in terms of generating, uh, kiddos. And that's just a testament to people having put off, having, um, children, you know, almost ten years. I mean, the average hasn't gone up that much, but in more educated, affluent areas, uh, we're looking at thirty-five being the new twenty-five. And that has really had an impact, um, on birth rates in the meantime, but it also means some of them are having babies at a much later point in life than we would have expected before. And all that's a backdrop to the fact that during the recession and, and then, and afterwards, we've seen this, uh, ride into birth rates, to the point where in Jackson County, over the last twelve, thirteen years, we're seeing birth rates down by twenty-two percent, you know, a full fifth. And when we lag that going forward, you put five years on to that to get those kids into kindergarten, we're looking at a period between twenty-twenty-eleven and twenty-twenty-three, which we're still in, uh, where the pipeline is continuing to get smaller. So you might be an area that attracts, um, young families and, and has entry-level housing, um, and maybe not seeing this kind of a decline, but a lot of more established areas, um, here and everywhere that I serve, this is a national phenomenon, this isn't particularly a local one. But it's something to keep in, in mind when you think about, um, why enrollment continues to fall at the kindergarten level. In addition to the aging of the population, obviously. So, um, just talking about residential development and, you know, setting up here in general, this is just looking over the last twenty years, just to give you a, a feeling of what the high growth looked like in the first part of the two thousands, and how, how many single-family units that was resulting, you know? And that was driven by about four times the rate of construction at single-family that we have been experiencing over the last six or eight years. The main thing that's picked up over that period of time, of course, is the multifamily. And, um, a lot of those projects, not all of them, but a significant number of them, have been marketed, designed, um, to folks other than families. A lot of one-bedrooms, a lot of studios, a few two-bedrooms, very expensive, high amenity, generally don't attract families. And we have some projects where three hundred units will net five or six kids. We put, you know, put that into, put that into perspective. Um, and Dan, do you want to add something here just about, maybe just a little bit about what's holding back the single-family market in Lee Summit?
Well, it's not just in Lee Summit, it's in, um, in the metro area. You know, the, the, uh, ebb and flow of housing here is, is, uh, pretty consistent with a, a larger, uh, the same chart for a larger area. Um, a lot of it is affordability, but certainly after the, the recession, a, a lot of folks, um, decided to stay in apartments longer. They, uh, generationally, they were not getting married as early and, and not having kids. Um, now, a big part of that was, was for financial reasons, but also for flexibility. And, uh, you know, the big question is, how many more apartment complexes can we have? And that's asked, that was being asked five years ago, that we've, you know, bankers were assuming we've met our, our quota. But, uh, the fact is that people are staying in those apartments longer, and I, the apartment and the rental thing is evolving, and we're seeing more and more single-family detached for rent. And that's a young family situation, and that's how they're, they're kind of resolving some of the affordability issue. But, um, you know, there are a few developers that really are trying to push for homes that young families can buy and come out of those apartments and buy and, and establish roots. And, um, it's hard, Lee, Lee Summit isn't particularly easy on that in terms of the approval process. Um, but there have been some successes.
Great, thank you. Um, turning from what has happened to what, you know, we see happening going forward in the future, and obviously there's a tremendous amount of, of potential, uh, in the system. And we, we use a, a database, a geographic database, and track, you know, not every single piece of land in the district, but every single piece of land in the district that, you know, might have any development potential even in the next twenty or twenty-five years, if we know something about it, something that, by land ownership, by virtue of infrastructure, by what have you. So it's not like that thirty-six thousand is, um, you know, it's gonna happen tomorrow. And in fact, about twenty-two thousand of that, and, uh, just, just, just some help on reading the map in case you're not used to seeing these, but, uh, these are standard sort of planning colors, where the future inventory of parcels in yellow are basically gonna be single-family projects. And then you have multifamily projects in orange, and commercial in red, and so on and so forth. Um, probably more interestingly is really to look at it in terms of, of when that development might happen. And here, where you, where you see red on this map, these are active developments, these are where houses are under construction. Um, and then when it go on into the oranges, those are where we expect to see houses in the next year or so, priority two, two to three years, and on down the line. So as you can see, there's, even in excluding the priority five, these are the white areas, um, there's still about fourteen thousand units that are in the pipeline. Um, and for the first time, um, we've incorporated a little bit of the, of the land from, uh, Property Reserve Incorporated, um, just a placeholder, really. Uh, the plans aren't specific enough to really, to place it on a map, but, um, we, we are looking at the potential for that development in the next five years. And I'll let maybe Dan speak to any of the projects, that one or any of the other ones.
Well, might as well mention a few words about that one, since it is, uh, such a, a big piece of property that's really changed the flow of development, uh, in Southern Lee Summit, uh, for many, many years, uh, as, as development has had to leapfrog that holding. And, uh, you know, they, I am consulting with Property Reserve, Inc., so I, uh, you know, there are some things I'm not at liberty to say, other than, uh, you know, it, for the first time ever, they are actively looking at, uh, a logical way to start moving some of that product. And, and they're doing that in both the North Parcel and the South Parcel. And certainly the North Parcel doesn't have as big of an impact, uh, barely any impact on residential, but the South Parcel does. And, uh, I, I think, uh, those plans will be coming out, or some version of those plans will be coming out in the next couple of months. Um, but it will be a very long-term process, because they have about thirty-one hundred acres in the, uh, in the south. So, but I think it's exciting news for Lee Summit to, to kind of work through that big hole in the market.
Thank you, Dan. Um, I'll just, before I leave this map, I'll, I'll just highlight a couple of the things that have, have changed, I guess, this year. Um, um, going around the, going around the block here, I guess. Can, can, continuing work at Chapman Farms. And uh, this is the Estates Project that's underway now, it's almost built out, but this parcel right here has been Monarch, I believe it's called, has been sitting idle for a long time. And they're actually gonna move in there now, um, they're starting work and it's going to be targeted towards entry level housing, wasn't anything else that we've seen up in there, that area. And they are pushing dirt at Woodlands at Chapman Farms too, this next piece. Uh, they're a little bit slow, but the infrastructure is going in place. Um, had a plan emerge here at seven and fifty highway, uh fifty highway and seven highway uh called Summit Trails and about, potential of about four hundred new single family units going in there. Um, work continues to, you know, progress at Foxberry Estates uh and Woodland Trails, but kind of on a steady pace. Some of the new ones we see starting up in the southwest corner. Um, this um Hawthorne Ridge was originally part of the new, of the um, what am I trying to say, Arbor Walk Project, and that's getting started as it's Whispering Woods. And then up in the central part of the district, we've got this uh Wood, Woodside Ridge Project um on prior across from Knox that a piece of land that we didn't even know would be developable till a couple of years ago. And then it's kind of obscured right here, another one called Streets of West Prior. It's mostly commercial, but it also has uh some residential on the backside of that. So a lot of things that are, that are trying to get started um in, to bolster those numbers. So we, we know we've got about fourteen thousand units um in projects that we think will get started in the next ten years. And the absorption projections that we've worked up um call for the absorption of about eleven thousand of those housing units over the next ten years. Um, but about forty-five percent of that inflow is going to be multifamily. There's more projects on the way. And so I do tend to agree with Dan, you wonder at some point uh who's gonna live in them all, but I do know that um it's interesting because it's being marketed at two ends of the, of the spectrum. Because um we have the people putting off the family decision, sort of the, the uh, the young professionals or the young people, but then also, you know, a huge number of baby boomers retire every day. And a lot of them are choosing to downsize into something that's easier to take care of. And that has been a lot more multifamily than we've been used to seeing in the past. But um, so those ten thousand, eleven thousand housing units, we translate into households. So it's gonna be about ten thousand additional households, that's an occupied housing unit. And even though I'm just showing the totals here, behind the scenes, I'm stratifying that by those age groups that we talked about. Because that's how we get to student generation, which is school-aged persons living in the district. Where they go to your school or to any school. And so right now, we know that number is right around twenty thousand eight sixty-eight, okay? It's, makes it sound a lot more precise than the actual estimate is. One of the things that we're dealing with right now is that we're ten years uh from the last census. And while we get um annual data from what's called the American Community Survey, which is a census tool, um, it's not very comprehensive. And so we're gonna get next year the opportunity to see how close some of these estimates really are because um a lot's happened in the last ten years. But there's always a difference between that student generation, the number of school-aged people out there and your enrollment, which is the K-12 numbers you see, of course, in the second set of columns. And I call the ratio between the two, the service rate. And if you went back to, to the year two thousand and two and I started doing this, uh the service rate was ninety-five percent. So it fell by about five percent during the last decade. And it was on course to fall by about another five percent this decade. It's down more than that this year, but that's because kids are still out there, but they're not in school at all. So that's where that difference comes in. We'll see that rate jump back up to some number next year, I'm saying eighty-five point three percent. And we have some logic behind that, it's not a pick, but um it could be more, it could be less. Um, because we don't have a lot of them in the system, it's gonna be a bit of a surprise for all of us. But um essentially, over the next ten years, we're looking at the potential um for about eighteen hundred more students uh with that bump we're talking about next year, as we'll see down the road in these slides. Um, vast majority of that increase is at the middle school and at the high school level, very, very little. Um, we're, we will net out of elementaries even with those kinds of housing growth numbers. And so we do this modeling just to show you basically at the same uh level where the twenty to twenty-five period, we've got more pink in the picture, kind of widespread. And that's, some of that's those kids coming back, the estimates of where they're gonna come back from, from the COVID hits. But the big increases, of course, continue to be sort of Chapman Farms, Foxberry, Woodland Trails, the developments in the western corner of the district, et cetera. And then, you know, during the second five years, you don't have that impact of the COVID kids coming back and you see the continuing aging and the impact of the aging in the, you know, the central and even accelerating in the western part of the district. It offsets an awful lot of the growth that will continue to happen in the growth areas around the district. So we um take those projections, which are by, you know, attendance area and we add them up here. This, so the first set of columns shows you based on our current configuration, the K-six, seven, eight, nine, twelve, um, how many students actually come from, you know, each attendance area? And the difference between that number and how many are at the school. And we don't have any huge movements, but because of some programs, for instance, we flex kids out of Meadow Lane um into another school. And it's not big differences, but when we're doing the projections, it's something we do try to account for. But then going forward, you see the actual school numbers and then the projections for the next ten years. I'm not gonna really dwell on those, blue just means the school is small. Uh, if it's getting bluer, it's getting smaller, if it's getting redder, it's getting bigger. Doesn't have any other significance other than to just kind of highlight big and small schools. These sets of columns at the end are probably a little more interesting where we um, we saw the year before, be, be, between eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, a loss of a hundred and sixty-nine students. Uh, the distribution's a little wacky because of course we had a boundary change go in there. But that distribution of, of student change is altogether different than the four hundred and fifty-sixth that we saw last year. So, I mean, this was, but at this point, you know, a, a huge one-year loss. So it, it, it demonstrates, you know, really how significant this was, particularly at the K-six, really at the K-two level. And so we get some sort of a bounce back from that. And along with a little bit of growth in uh housing, we'll have some increase in, in um the elementary enrollment, but as you can see, basically, it's, it's fairly slow and steady. Um, and there are some areas where it's obviously congregated, you know, particularly like in the Mason areas and, and down in the southwest corner of the district. Um, see good numbers basically um with the, with the current configurations anyway. We had a boundary change here, obviously, that changes those numbers. But overall, because of the dips we've had in, in elementary, we're not, you know, looking at too much growth with Voss this year, but some growth at the middle school, some more growth in the middle school. Um, but the big increases are gonna continue to be at the, at the uh, at the high school level with the hundred and seventy-one, not so much, but then the later period, three seventy-one, picking up on the end of the, of the current wave, if you will. Um, this chart, and again, I don't wanna spend, the, the patterns are basically the same, although we did wanna show you uh the implications of K-five, six, eight. In this case, it's strictly by attendance area because when we talk about the difference between attendance area and school numbers, those are gonna change because of this um, you know, this new configuration. So this is strictly looking at, at where kids live. And I guess the first takeaway, at least that I got, is that this configuration obviously provides a lot of relief, uh particularly to uh things like Mason where we, you know, are capacity challenged, but not so challenged that we can really go off and, and construct a facility. So it really has some, some nice um, um impacts, I guess, on mitigating uh what we've been looking at there, even with um, you know, an increase of seven hundred over the next five years. Um, we do see, of course, the flip side, the impact then going on to the uh, in, into the middle schools. Um, balancing out very nicely with the plan that we have in place, reaching, you know, most of them are close to twelve hundred students by the end of the projection period. But um, as Dr. Miller has discussed, with some of the renovations and things, those capacity numbers are also achievable. So it really just leaves us with the, the, the run-up we're expecting at the high school and high schools and particularly of um, you know, Lee's Summit um north in, in this particular scenario. And some of the capacity issues that might be there. Um, we have, uh, as I understand it, you have most of that capacity. Um, and what you don't, one of the things that I've been learning from COVID is that and all the context from the people, is that um, there is, there are a group of students for which uh this new wave of, of online education has been a benefit. And we don't see everyone wanting to go back full-time to brick and mortar facilities, particularly at the high school level, maybe at the junior high level. I doubt very little at the elementary level, at least on a permanent basis. Um, they are getting rid of snow days in some places in Minnesota because now they're just gonna put everybody online. I thought that was kinda interesting. But uh, it might be that what you're over at the high school level, you know, might be mitigated, you know, completely with the three high schools just by virtue of some of those online programs. Um, so as we, as we've been saying, um, enrollment is likely to rebound next year just because um Lord William will have a vaccine in place and get kids back into school. Um, and then we'll have some kind of slow increases before the housing, the next wave of housing growth that we see really gets, really gets rolling. And in the meantime, we're also watching for, anticipating some regeneration of the oldest neighborhoods. We've already seen a little of that and particularly around the downtown area, but it hasn't really generated very many kids. But other areas to the west of downtown, I think, will generate kids again with, with that regeneration. Um, in the, in the, in the near term, the rate of uh construction will increase, you know, we said slightly, but that aging of the population is gonna offset a lot of that growth. Um, we think single family will really increase from the middle of the projection period on. Um, it could generate, you know, a significant number of students, but the multifamily development that we see coming, um, still, at least the most of the projects I'm aware of, and maybe Dan could comment on this too, is that I don't see a lot that's really set up for families. And he hit on it, the most popular um fad, the trend that we see there are single family rentals. You know, whole subdivisions built as rental houses. And that seems to have taken the place of the standard uh courtyard apartment with a swimming pool and a top lot. Um, and the longer term, the, the, the district is, got tremendous potential for growth, not just because there's land, not just because you have great schools, um, but because of all the economic development that's occurred in and around, you know, your, your community. Um, and the potential, you know, down the road for, you know, development of some of that PRI land that I think could be, you know, kind of a game changer for us. Before I turn it over for questions, I'll ask Dan, was there anything you'd like to add to that, Dan?
Uh, yeah, I would. I, you know, the apartment industry is really trying to grapple with, with people staying in apartments longer. And, and that usually means more square footage for younger residents um that might uh, might have at a different time moved out before or while they're expecting their first child. But uh more and more, uh because they're having children later, um, of those residents are going to need bigger units. And that's a, a little bit of a conflict with what cities like to approve in terms of apartments. They like A, A-plus level apartments with a highly amenitized, top, top-level finishes, inside and out and so forth. But that doesn't work financially for those families that wanna stay in apartments longer and have kids, or at least start a family there. So, you know, that's one issue that, that will be resolved over time, but, but uh certainly uh, na- nationwide, investors are looking at that type of apartment category that is pretty hard to get approved. The other thing I wanted to, to ask, because I don't get a, you know, put a demographer on, on the spot very often, but uh I was just kind of curious if there was uh any uh water cooler talk about uh a, a mini population boom or surge post uh a pandemic? When uh, you know, hey, the kids are at school now, you know, will, will, will there be a, a uh a bounce in, in birth rate just because people have been disrupted in such a big way with all that's going on?
Yeah, that's a really good thing. I mean, of course, the answer is, it's too early to know. And anecdotally, uh we, we, we heard a lot of that, people were comparing it to like a blackout or something, you know? Everybody's gotta stay home, there's, they need something to do with their time. But um, and I think the concern over it, the, and the indefineness of it and the political thing that we've been going through um has, has headed that off. And most of the folks that I have been talking to um don't see that happening. And it certainly was something that was talked about early on and who knows, it could still materialize in some places. But um, it's been, it's been like a recession in that um people are uneasy about the future. And that's typically not the time when they make a decision to have, have kiddos, but.
Yeah, I was talking about after.
Oh, afterwards. Yeah, it's possible. Yeah, it's possible, especially since everybody's going out and buying as many bedrooms as they can right now. Because they're, because they're working at home. So, anyway, we've visited it enough, I will turn it over for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We appreciate the presentation, I know, and I think there will be probably multiple questions um coming. So we'll do our best to uh say them loudly, so if you don't hear us, just, just let us know. We're gonna start with uh Board Member Hedrick.
Thank you. Um, actually, in, in regard to that conversation, I was just reading an article in the paper over the weekend, cause I still read the paper, um, about um the number of kids born because the Chiefs won the Super Bowl back in February and how many people were out celebrating that we're gonna have a lot more kids born this year uh in the month of November or in December because of that. So put that in your back pocket maybe too. Um, I, I do have two legitimate questions though. Um, the first one would be um, based on your review of the um developments that you've been kind of looking at over the past few years, did you notice any significant changes in the planned uh housing developments this year? That's my first question. And then I have a question on one of your, a couple of your maps. So if you wanna address that, then we can go to that, your map.
I didn't see any major changes in the developments coming along the, in the pipeline this year. A lot of them take so many years to come to fruition that um, you know, we're, we're still seeing what was happening, you know, two years ago in some ways. What do you think, Dan?
Well, I think the one that probably is the biggest departure from the normal seventy to seventy-five foot wide lot typical single family is what Summit Homes was able to get approved on uh Highway one fifty and Prior on the southwest corner uh with a little bit more density and smaller lots. And there's, there's quite a bit of pressure for that to happen in a lot of places. Um, and, and a lot of neighbors don't like it. But uh, that's probably the biggest departure. Uh, within your district uh in the Chapman Farms area, uh and this has been going on for some times, the sheer volume of, of townhomes that are being built in that area is um, it, it, it's probably the highest concentration in the entire metro of all the areas. We, we track nine counties and it's probably the highest concentration of townhomes that we see. And um, that's, that's a little departure just, just from, you know, consistent patterns around the metro area.
Okay. Um, and then on the map, um, really, I'm looking at. And then on the map, really, I'm looking at page 13 to 14 of your presentation. On page 13, kind of the area I'm looking at is, it's identified at Browning Road, right in the middle of it, I think that says Browning. And it just says it's an open space. And then on the next page, on 14, it shows that as non-residential. Is the assumption that that is zoned some other, like, commercial, or is it not zoned?
That's, that's the Reed Wildlife Refuge.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I just keep it in the inventory so that I don't, I don't get the urge to build houses on it. And also, there's a piece of it, this Woodland Trails was originally a project called The Wilds.
Yes.
That actually had a piece on the north side of, of 150 Highway also.
Yes.
And during, and during the recession, the state came and scooped that up and made it part of the refuge.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that. Thank you so much.
Board Member Allen?
Thank you, President Murdock. I don't know if you get into the specifics here, but I was curious, when you were talking about, you know, the home value homes, right, and then trends of single units or attached two-to-fourplexes, I mean, do you drill down to figure out, you know, current entry-level home values, or do you have a range there of what you see in a leased summit compared to national? Or do you see any trends of more single units or two-plex, four-plex, you know, maintenance-free sort of things? I don't know if you get into those specifics, I was just curious.
Well, we certainly do, but I think I'll let Dan answer first.
I'm, I, I want to make sure I understand the question. What is entry level? Is, is that the crux?
That's part of it, yes. Because I know, in general, you'd said, hey, we see entry-level homes in a leased summit not increasing as much as we do see, you know, larger value or larger-priced homes. So I didn't know if you actually have a price point there that you target, or look at, or evaluate? And then along with that, do you see some trends of maintenance-free sort of developments versus not, or single-family versus multi-family, that kind of deal?
Yeah. Well, the, probably one of the most abused terms in the real estate world is entry level because that, that definition changes so much. But when I, when I look in, in our world today, what an entry-level home is, I think of what is, what is the lowest price you can buy a new home for? And out, out in the, you know, in the cracks of the market, out on the edges, you can buy, believe it or not, a $200,000 new home. You can't do that in 95% of the market. So if I had to say what is an entry level, it's probably $275,000 now, where you could reasonably buy it in about most school districts. In, in terms of, you know, the maintenance-provided villa kind of product, how prevalent is that, or is that a growing market? You know, it's, what, what is growing a lot is the, the prevalence of single-level living homes, either a ranch, a reverse story and a half, and to a lesser degree, a story and a half. Now, 10 years ago, that was a product that only moved down buyers looked at. And that's, and, and you saw more specialized enclaves. Think of Winterset, the villas at, at Winterset Park as an example. But now, in almost any new home community you drive through that is not specifically targeted to move down buyers, you see those same floor plans as a very dominant product. So we have a lot of older buyers, kids have moved out, or they're in high school, that are buying products that were, you know, a decade ago were really reserved for specialty little neighborhoods, but they're in all neighborhoods now. So a big resistance piece to that type of product in those enclave communities was the cost of the maintenance. A lot of these folks are still very active, still want to take care of their, their exteriors, their lawn and landscape. So they just didn't, didn't want to pay the, the maintenance costs of a maintenance-provided community. So there's a certain sector that wants to do that, and they will, will pay really good money to do that, but a growing number that are not quite that retirement age are choosing that kind of a house and choosing non-maintenance-provided communities. Did that answer?
Yes, sir.
Board, Board Member Fritzi?
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at Slide 20 on enrollment projections, which is always intriguing to me to look at. I don't know how you guys get, you get pretty close to it. On that, we have middle school number four, which we just broke ground for. And I'd like to know how you develop projections out when that school opens in 2022 and beyond, how you develop projections for a school that we haven't established boundaries yet? How do you do that for all, all of the middle schools?
Well, I think we do have a working boundary. And so it's, it's just using that and this data, you know, that we do projected by geography. And when I'm projecting it by geography, I don't, you know, I don't know what school it's going to be assigned to. So I can do this, which is part of the power of the system, really, is so that we can look forward and try to, you know, get attendance areas that, that work for us over time. And I think that if you look at the, you know, at, at, at what we've got in this, in, set up anyway, it does a really good job, you know, balancing those four middle schools. Dr. Miller, is there something I'm missing there?
He's coming up.
No, Rick's correct. We, when we finished the CFMP work, we had a template just to balance numbers, so it serves as a placeholder. We will actually go ahead and do boundary work. But again, I think the numbers are correct. It, it just may, again, going back to that grid document, some of those grids may adjust and change, and that's the team, what the boundary work team will do.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions related to the demographics presentation? Yeah, absolutely. Dr. Buck?
Rick, earlier, when we were speaking on a different day, we were about 8% down on kindergarten, but you kind of gave me some perspective when I asked about what's that compared to your other 24 clients? So 8% decline in kindergarten this year, how's that compare?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's kind of right in the middle of the range. We're, we're seeing kindergarten down 5% to even 15% in some, in some districts. Overall enrollment, you know, down in the neighborhood of 8%, well, basically 4% to, 4% to 12% or so, 8%. You're right, about in the middle there. So, no, this is, you know, probably lighter than the impact in some of the areas, even though it, it seems like an awful lot of kids. But it's, it's definitely been something that everyone's dealing with.
I don't think we have any other questions for you, Rick. Dan, we sincerely appreciate you guys joining us here for this presentation, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to move on in our work session. We're going to go back here to 2.01, which is a board policy ACA. And Dr. Buck, I will turn it over to you.
Shortly, Joe Hatley's going to come up. So at a previous meeting, when we talked about ACA, there was some desire to hear some explanation of where the genesis came from, which is the federal government. And so he's going to explain what ACA does and how little discretion we have in choosing what's going to be in this.
There we go. Still, still learn the ropes. Thank you. I want to reiterate the point we made last month, that this policy ACA was put out by MSBA as a model policy in mid-August. It was a reaction to the U.S. Department of Education's Title IX regulations that were released in May and were to become effective, I believe, August 14. Understanding that this policy was a bit late in arriving, we, we had the district, and other districts have done likewise, adopted resolutions that effectively adopted the federal regulations pending the formal adoption of a policy such as this, because this is obviously a lot to absorb. There are a lot of new concepts in here, and it's raised a lot of questions from people, in many cases legitimate questions, about, you know, the fairness or the wisdom of some components of the policy. Unfortunately, the bulk of this policy is dictated by the Title IX regulations that came into effect. Didn't really leave a whole lot of room for maneuvering by school districts. The regulations really, I think, had their genesis with dissatisfaction over how disciplinary matters were being handled on college campuses, where there's a lot more opportunity for sexual assault and the like, and, and a feeling, at least among the current administration, that the way Title IX was being interpreted was not providing adequate due process protections for those who were accused of sexual assault, sexual harassment on college campuses. Those regulations were very controversial. Department of Education got a lot of pushback on them. Several states filed suit to try to keep the regulations from taking effect, and all of those suits failed. So we are faced with a situation where, at least for now, we're pretty much going to have to adopt a policy of some kind, and I think this policy is probably about as good as we can get. The one place, and I'll just point this out, where I felt we had to stray from the MSBA language, had to do with the imposition of discipline. If somebody is found responsible for sexual harassment or sexual violence under this policy, the MSBA version had the, let's use a student, for example, the student would just go, then go for referral through the school district's regular disciplinary processes. I strongly felt that that was inconsistent with the regulations themselves, which require that decision to be made through the Title IX process, and by the Title IX, by the investigator, the decision-maker, and the appellate decision-maker, if need be. I discussed those concerns with staff at MSBA, and they said that they had the same internal debate for quite some time, and certainly did not believe that our interpretation was wrong. And, and I just felt like, in order to bring this into strict compliance with those regulations, and to try to keep a target off your back, we needed to hew as closely as we could to the federal regulations, which don't allow for the regular disciplinary processes. There've been a couple of questions, and I'm just going to respond to some of these. One is the definition of sexual harassment under this policy. I think somebody has, may have written to some board members expressing concern that the definition in this policy says that someone is responsible for sexual harassment if the harassment has been severe and pervasive. And under most formulations of sexual harassment law, someone can be responsible if it's severe or pervasive. And, and what this policy does is sort of raise the bar, in a sense, because it has to be, the "and" is very important, it has to be all of these things as opposed to one of them. But the federal regulations use the word "and," and there was a lot of pushback on that, and they stuck to their guns whenever they issued the final regulation. The upshot of that, though, is that let's suppose someone has engaged in conduct that may not meet that "and" standard. The Department of Education has said, if that's the case, you can say that they didn't violate Title IX, but you can still hold them responsible under your standard student discipline code for the "or." And likewise, in the employment context, because this also applies in the employment context now, if there's sexual harassment in the workplace, that has to go through the Title IX process initially, and then we have the same determination that's made. The other main thing that's been changed, and I think we've been implementing, implementing this with Dr. Barker, is now any concern that even touches on sexual harassment, sexual violence, sexual assault, if it even hints of that, we're trying to make sure that she is involved in that as a gatekeeper at the very first instance. And that's a model that's generally been adopted by school districts everywhere in the country since now, since this regulation came out, because it ensures that we're following the regulations, and we make that initial determination whether something goes the Title IX route, or whether it goes the regular student discipline, regular employee discipline route. Policy, it's going to be interesting. We, we will probably have a change of administration in January, and, and I think this is something that a new administration may target as a regulatory scheme that it may want to make some changes to. But it's, it's, it's not that easy to do. It takes a year or two. So we're probably going to be looking at this policy for a year or two at a minimum, and then if it becomes a priority for the next administration to change the regulations, we'll be back here probably with a revised policy at that point. But we really don't have a lot of choice in terms of some of the things in this policy. They're controversial. It's dictated by the federal government, and if we don't comply with that, you risk losing your federal funds, and that's a pretty hefty part of your budget. So we certainly don't want to put anybody at risk of that.
Do any board members have questions regarding Mr. Hatley's statements regarding policy ACA here during the work session? Board Member Hedrick?
I don't have any questions about his presentation, but I just wondered if, in terms of your comment about potential future changes, if our staff internally, who are serving the various roles within the Title IX, if, I, I think one of the things that would be helpful maybe is if they keep track of some of the more problematic areas that we could then use that information in the future to, if there is going to be any changes, that we could submit that information. So that was just my only comment.
I think that's a good point, and we're seeing, just for people out there, we are seeing nodding from some of our employees that we can be able to track those changes, and some of the questions that we had actually asked even last month, to make sure that we recognize those. Board Member Campbell?
I just wanted to highlight, you mentioned Dr. Barker, and the reason you raised her name is because she is our Title IX coordinator, right? I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. Yeah, she's been designated the Title IX coordinator. She's been through the training now that's required under the regulations, and I think she's good to go. And when there are difficult questions, she'll call me, and we've already had a couple where we've had to decide which route something will take. So we've been implementing this as a practical matter since August.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions here about policy ACA? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hatley, we appreciate it. We're going to move on to 2.02, which is our board policy DGA. And this is where we are talking just a little bit about our purchasing process, I believe, and Dr. Miller, I believe, is going to address this one.
This is really just revisiting our board work session from October. Krista Bataglia provided the board additional information, and really, we just wanted to give the board an opportunity, you know, what we're proposing at this point is really only a modification to board policy DGA, to modify the contract limits to 15,000. I believe that's in board docs for you, and we're, we're happy to open it up to any questions. And if you're supportive, we would move forward to a first read in, in December's board meeting.
So this is, as, as all of you guys know, we did work on this in October, and then we were talking about these thresholds here. So does anybody have any questions for Dr. Miller regarding this particular policy? As she stated, we would be coming back with it as a first read next month, so any questions about this one? Okay, that was easy, Dr. Miller, thanks. Okay, as, as we know, we've already done 2.03, so we're going to move on to 2.04, which was a staff appreciation item. And I don't know, Dr. Buck, if you would like to introduce this, I can, however you would like to do it, is up to you. One of the things that we had been talking about among board leadership is trying to figure out some way to communicate with our staff that we understand what is going on throughout this particular what is going on throughout this particular year is unlike anything anyone has ever gone through, quite frankly, at least in a school setting. And so one of the things that we did task staff with here was what would be the fiscal implications of offering our staff an extra PDO day that they could take essentially any time they wanted here to say essentially, thank you. And and I understand that the the fiscal implication would be high, and that's why we do need to talk about it as a board or have it here presented in a work session so that if there are concerns, certainly, we can we can talk about that. And then also, if there would be some way that we would need to alter that or do something different, we can continue to talk about that as a board. So to the to my fellow board members, you probably saw in the packet, there is a chart of how much it would cost to do a PDO for every single employee in our school district. And I believe, Dr. Buck, if I'm in, you can tell me if I'm wrong here, that that is the maximum amount in each one of those categories in terms of how we ended up figuring that. And if you'd like to give some more details, you can.
Yes, we asked the business department and the HR department to work on this, and what they came back to is if every single single day you gave to every single employee, so every employee would get one PTO or PDO day, and they never used it, and it made it to buyback, the total cost would be just a little over half a million dollars. That would not most likely be in one year, and it most likely, you know, all wouldn't be unused. So you see sub-cost lists there, too, for people who would need a sub if they took that day. But if they took that day and we and we had a doc day, they would still need a sub cost. So that cost exists if they don't come on that particular day. You can see what the total salary retirement taxes are, because some people like to look at what you're paying someone to do for that day. But so the actual increased cost to the district really is at first line, just a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars. And that's only if they don't use it and it goes to buyback, and it wouldn't all be in the same year.
And I think, just so the board members know, you know, we were as a, when we were in these leadership meetings and we were talking about this, this was this was just coming more as a brainstorming, what what can we do when we know the extra workload that we have placed on our staff? If other people have other suggestions, things like that, we certainly are open to them. So this was one of the things that we were thinking about. So any discussion that we would like to have on this? Obviously, this is a work session item, and then we could decide on something here going forward. Board Member Doan?
So how does that? Well, my first question is, how does this come out in the budget? That's a big chunk. And and if I could give everyone a raise and five days off, I would do it. But I also have to be fiscally responsible. And then also, I I really think this should go through Team Lee Summit.
So the I I think, and and I'm not for sure, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, Board Member Fritchy, I mean, in this particular case, I think the thought was, is that trying to push it into Team Lee Summit is too late, essentially. I mean, that would take a long time, and from a true salary and benefits thing, this being a one-time deal, I'm not saying that we couldn't try to push it into Team Lee Summit. Sometimes I think that we are pushing a lot into Team Lee Summit right now. But I also understand where you're coming from on that. So it's part of this was in an effort to try to come up with something that was tangible and that could be used even during this year without getting delayed farther and farther, even into two thousand and twenty-one. But I do understand what you're saying. Board Member Hedrick?
Yes, I do have concerns about the financial impact, particularly in terms of where we are in the budget and the uncertainty in revenue over the next few years. And given the fact that last year, there were days that people were paid for that they didn't have to fulfill their contracts, that were pretty significant. And this year as well, where and people who are absent are not due to COVID, based on the resolution that we approved, are not having to use leave. And then I do agree with Board Member Doan, based on past practices, issues like this came through Team Lee Summit. And I think the other thing that the benefit of that discussion at Team Lee Summit is that they could develop options and for things that really they would see as beneficial. Because I I'm always have been of the school that it's only a benefit if people think it is. And so I I think that really because we do want to do something for our employees, that really needs to come from them to say, these are the things that would benefit, we think are more meaningful and beneficial to us.
I think those, I I do think those are really good points. And when even when this was getting tossed around, we hadn't, we had not gotten the resolution passed for the CARES Act funds. So I think that that's something else that I I do want to make sure that people know. Board Member Campbell?
I I share the question on how does that hit the budget? So can we get an answer to that question?
It's just an, if you do it, it's an additional to the budget. The part you don't know, you won't know until the end of the year, is how much of it is out this year, because you don't know how many of those days are going to be bought back this year. So it's an unknown increase to expenses.
But I'm going to just follow that up and also say that if that is not paid back this year, the cost for it in the future will be more than it is shown here as salaries increase.
But it's isn't carried as a liability year to year?
But it's based on that the value of that person's day. So as their salary increases, this rate would also increase.
She is correct. So if all days made it to PDO buyback, and some of them go into a different year, it would be an increasing cost. All days probably would not. Not everyone ever, there's many employees that never get to a PDO buyback situation. But we're trying to give you the worst-case scenario, if you did this, what the cost of the budget would be.
Sure. And I share the other board members' comments. I appreciate some type of incentive. Thank you. Appreciation is is really important this year. I hear that as well.
And I and I do think that it would be important to make sure that whatever we're talking about here is tangible to them, right? And so I I mean, if, and I should know this, when is the next Team Lee Summit meeting?
January.
It's in January?
Tenth, I think, isn't it?
Okay. Board Member Allen?
Thank you, President Murdock. So if I'm, a couple of things. I heard the term all employees of our district, and then I look at the chart or this attachment, and it says eligible employees. So is that equal?
No, we do have some folks who do not get benefits. So think of your hourly folks that work part-time and, say, Kids Country, things like that. They don't have PDO, BTO.
I want that clarification, because early it said all. Well, all would include part-time. So if it's eligible, I want it to be eligible, not to be a, you know, nitpicker, but it's, I just don't want misinformation out.
So if we have a a non-employee doing assistant coach basketball, and so they're just getting a small stipend doing assistant coaching basketball at the middle school level, that does not include them. It's full-time employees with benefits. Am I saying this correct, Dr. Delsom? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then also, PTO, PDO buyback, all right? So exempt, not exempt, total five thirty-three. So as we go down this chart, three eighty-nine, one fifty-six are our exempt or cost, but then we're factoring in additional PSRS or PERS, right? That's retirement and then taxes over and above. So there are some numbers in here, because they don't add up, you know, going down and across. I assume there's some extra.
The third line you're seeing is how much that employee would make on a day if they, you know, just you're already paying them for a day. So that's all employees, what their cost is in a day. So you're already on the hook for that, if you will.
Board Member Fritchy?
Well, thank you. And and most of my my point has already been made by some questions and answers. I just wanted to reiterate that, yeah, President Murdock and I have been talking about this for a while. And when something that was tangible to help our staff members, and he he explained it pretty well, so really, there's not a lot more to say. But conceivably, Dr. Buck, I think you you said it, when we're talking about these costs, that this could technically stretch out until someone actually retires. Right? If they don't use it, yeah. So so the costs would definitely be spread out over time, you know? And to Board Member Hedrick's point, yes, those would increase over time, too, because of that. So but I do like the, I will, I will also second that idea that if there are other tangible ways or things that we can do that our staff feels would be beneficial to them, I would be very welcoming to hear those things, because we, this whole idea just generated as a, we appreciate our staff so much. We know that you guys sitting right in front of us have gone above and beyond the call of duty, and and certainly every person out there in our in our whole network, our transportation folks, our our cafeteria workers, our school folks, teachers, everyone has just gone above and beyond in this really unusual time, and we'd like to figure out a way to help, you know?
So since we are in a work session, you know, one of the things we could do, if it's the the will of the board here, is to, if you guys would like to push this into Team Lee Summit, to make sure that we're getting that input on, hey, what what is something that might be beneficial here? I'm, I think that's absolutely, that's absolutely fine if people would like to do that. I mean, we can scrap it all together, but or but something that where it could be brainstormed in Team Lee Summit would be absolutely appropriate if you'd like to, if that's what people would like to do. Board Member Allen?
Yes, sir, thanks, President Murdock. I, that's fine, and and that's the will of the board. I mean, Julie and I are members of Team Lee Summit. It will be probably a quick turnaround, obviously. If our meeting's mid-January, we probably need to come out of that meeting with some definitive, you know, recommendations or guidelines or guidance or whatever that might be. I don't know that Team Lee Summit will be capable, we'd be capable, but I don't know that we we should expect some sort of definite or finite number or dollars. But I mean, it's 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 broadest representation of each department. So I think it would be well worth the dialogue, certainly.
Okay, is is that what everybody would like would like to do? Is that okay with with all board members? I want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page here. Okay.
Maybe that's a Dr. Delsom question.
There you go. There you go. So.
Our agenda will be on a scroll.
Right. So we we will allow that to go into to Team Lee Summit, and then they can come back with any recommendations or or ideas, and we can discuss those. Okay, that actually ends this work session. We'll be back at seven o'clock for the normal monthly meeting. Thank you.